Six o'clock, we'll open the meeting for the board of selectmen for January eighteenth, twenty twenty-two. Our agenda this evening, we will have a public forum, followed by appointments and resignations. New business tonight is the, we have, well, tonight is the, well, today is, is it today? The opening of the annual.
Powerball.
Yeah. The opening of the annual town meeting warrant. A discussion regarding the possible treasurer, collector, town clerk, department combination. Discussion regarding the transition plan regarding the town administrator position. Discussion regarding the union building assessment report and the next steps. And then further discussion regarding the potential use for the COVID rescue funds. I think we've one set of minutes from January fourth. So we'll start with the public forums, anyone here tonight to speak to Joan?
I just was wondering, I'm in the process of trying to read through the, the town charter.
Okay, the draft, yes.
Yes, and one of them anyway, I'm not sure it's the.
Yeah.
No, no, I.
It should be number sixteen is the most, is the. Sixteen, many, many revisions.
I know why you're leaving that.
In any case, and at some point are, are there going to be any meetings or anything to discuss this before?
Yes, absolutely. So the governance committee is actually going to meet next Thursday, the twenty-seventh, next week. There is a meeting posted for that. You're certainly welcome to join. We're going to be doing that by Zoom, so you can attend that. Obviously, they're all open to the public. At that point, we're going to discuss our method and what our plan is for going forward. It's been submitted to all the department heads already. We've really received no feedback from anybody, so the next step is to maybe sort of revisit the boards again, put it out to the public, and then we're going to get it on annual town meeting. So it's been on the website. There is a draft available for anybody to look at. It's been on the web website for months, so.
Well, I think I, I think I had asked Ryan maybe for a copy of this.
Yeah.
Point some time ago, and I just, yeah, after Christmas, I.
So there's, there's been no.
Had a chance to start looking at it, so.
Yeah.
There's been no changes to the draft since, well, we posted on the website, I think, back in October, early November. It's been, it's been static.
So that's.
So the one I printed for you should still be right.
Okay. So yes, the answer to your question is yes, it is going to be.
I'm sending you sixteen, but I thought, I'm gonna send you your.
Yeah.
Actually, don't, maybe don't use that one, because there was some, there was some grammar stuff in K T's last draft. We changed before we put it on the website, but I don't think he's, he's made, I don't think.
He may not have done it on his end, yeah.
The one I gave you is more accurate than the one I just gave.
Yeah, so it is, it's going to start getting socialized.
It's probably something. That it's available in the, what's happening.
Yeah.
Winter version.
Yeah.
Run a, run a list for that.
Yeah.
I'm gonna have to share them, because I don't remember. I don't remember, you know, her mentioning it to, but I mean.
I sent it out. I sent it out.
Yeah, so the.
Several months ago, yeah.
There was a round of feedback requests from boards that went back more than a year. Before they got to sixty, so it was like halfway through, they put out a solicitation.
Well, I remember, I remember the original.
And you responded.
And I complained about.
Yeah, and then I did it again.
They took that feedback and they kept working on it, and they issued number sixteen.
And I sent that out a couple of months ago.
Couple of months ago.
I'll be doing it again, so, I mean, just to.
As long as I get the right one, and I'll try to keep track of, of your meetings and stuff, and we're going to be discussing.
Okay. All right, anything else? Rafi? Hello? That's on our agenda to discuss tonight.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Um, anybody else?
I'll just add, just to, you know, I know that rules normally, but I do get very, just trying to give. What our COVID situation is, so still, we, what else, no longer fix us. And our numbers. It stops because the numbers are so high. And again, we're dealing with, we're comparing that, we talked about earlier.
Yeah.
Inside of our organization, currently, we've only got, from this variant, two people that have tested positive. They are now behind.
Good.
I actually was one of the people that had it, that was asymptomatic. Reached out to, you know, the cars that be, and I was quarantined five days, and was saying, we could back to work from the back.
Yeah.
So I think that although the cases are relatively active, I think this current area is far less. I mean, it's more less dangerous, but I, it's more management, I guess, required.
Yeah. Okay.
Oh, you have to, you have to be tested periodically anyway, right? You have no symptoms, you know?
Yeah. We actually, we, we, yeah, I know, we have to test, but we are exposed. And honestly, you know, with the amount of people that currently are exposed, and people have been raised all the state, they are really modest, because in fact, they do have a positive test. And Brian was really brave, was able to get a lot of home tests to the town employees, so now our, our, actually has, right, given you.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
It's like, you know, thank you, Brian, I appreciate it. Like, sense of, we do it, so. I mean, we do it limited, once we have side symptoms, and we do the vacuum tests, and you know, which is, say, limiting the amount of infections that are occurring inside of all of our organizations. So again, five-day quarantine has been helpful, too, and, you know, again, a five-day quarantine, and the end of that, it's one of the topics where actually giving effect. Probably still the days prior to having those last symptoms, or the belief that if that would happen, we have to do it, that. It tests, but you probably haven't before that, obviously, you know, it's five days, test positive.
Yeah.
There's so much, and us as an organization have learned so much.
I'm sure, yeah.
And the guys are all very talented, so we're coming in, we're asking. All the cautious that.
Right. Good. Thank you. Okay, nothing else in the public, we'll move on. Appointments, we have no appointments, but we do have one resignation. So, Anne Farina from the three hundred and fiftieth.
Anniversary committee.
Great, anniversary committee, thank you. So there's no one that's going to be filling that, right? You're going to be adjusting the number of.
No, I think, if you make a determination now that it's just remain a nine-member committee going forward, it's fine.
Okay. Okay, very good. Thank you, Anne, for the time you did put in. We can keep this group going forward.
Big year ahead.
Yeah. Okay, new business, opening of the annual town meeting warrant.
I'd suggest you make a motion to open the warrant, and set a date to close the warrant on Wednesday, March twenty-third.
Is there a motion to open the warrant?
So moved second.
Right, all favor?
So the close is three twenty-three.
Okay, very good. So the warrant is officially open. Next up, discussion regarding. Yeah, I was just gonna say, we really want to take this out of order.
Out of order?
Yeah.
Because she's here for the, and Rafi's here, too.
Yeah.
So not to put him on the spot on that subject.
No, I agree. I was, as I was going to start reading that, thinking this may be a lengthy discussion, so. So we'll take the ARPA conversation.
Well, there's the Union School Building, which Joan requested.
All right, we'll do that.
And then there's the ARPA, which is last, so.
Okay. Okay, so we will take two things out of order. We'll start with the discussion regarding the union school building assessment report.
Well, did you get my, the assessment I sent you?
I did.
Did you have a chance to take a look at?
Briefly, but I was surprised at the.
At the price.
The price tag, yeah.
Yeah, I'm gonna deserve a creation.
Yeah. Yeah, that's significant, for sure.
So, you know, I just, I know we're gonna need to decide how to move forward here. That's a lot of money. Now, the technically, I believe, the, you know, CPA will pay for, you know, historical restoration. I don't believe they pay for maintenance, okay?
Right.
And that's been the problem all along. School district is responsible for maintenance. They are not responsible for historical restoration. So, you know, we need to make a decision. Uh, what we want to do, all right, I think, in the assessment, Lynn said that seventy-five percent of the cost of that project is painting, scraping, peeling, I guess they do some kind of chemical peel on the, the paint to make, to try to get it off as much off as possible, and, and of course, the lead abatement.
Yep.
So, you know, that is the major part of it. There's some other, there's some other stuff, I think, some tiles on the roof, the window at the top that needs to be, uh, need to work, and, you know, a variety of other things, but, you know, the, the bottom line here is, if we, you know, I've talked to different people, different people, you know, people feel differently about it. If we go with, if we go with the capital plan, letting the school district do the capital plan, I mean, the superintendent said they had earmarked less than fifty thousand for it, you know, with the cost of lead abatement, and and all that, I think, even if you just painted them, it's gonna cost quite a bit of money, and it will not be covered with CPA costs.
Right.
So. So we need to decide how to proceed with this. It's a, you know, a big project. And, you know, I wrote the two years from it, so, you know, I don't have a lot of experience, you know, handling stuff like this, but I think if we all, we can all get together on it, you know, we should be able to come up with something.
Do you remember what the nine, what the report?
Eight ninety-one.
Eight, okay.
Almost eight hundred and twenty thousand.
So how, so it's, it all falls under historic CPA restoration?
If, yes, if we, if we actually, if we decide to, you know, restore the building properly, now, I had, I know one of McLean, oh, no, McLean House, all the, all the clavels were taken down and replaced. Henry Fontaine, he did that work, you know?
Right.
Told me early on, when we were talking about Swallow Union, he said, you know, it'd be, probably be a lot cheaper, just to take all that stuff off of there. You know, less, you know, problem with lead, you know, put it in the dumpster and have it all away, and then just put all the new stuff up and repaint. But, you know, that was then, and this is now, the cost of materials, as I understand it, is is very high.
Yeah.
So, you know, whether or not that would save us any money, and it certainly wouldn't be in keeping with the historical, there's a, there is a, I think it's called the Secretary of the Interiors, blah, 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 on historical, on historic preservation, and when you're doing, when you're doing historic preservation, if you want the, if you want any CPA money on it, you've got to follow is the rules and regulations that, that he sets forth. Now, on the McLean property, McLean House, that house, as I understand it, the clavels were in very bad shape, and basically had to be replaced. The one thing that Lynn said in her report on Swallow Union, on the Union School, was that the clavels were not in too bad a shape. You know, they were half decent, so, once again, to, to use, to replace them, you know, you could probably be looking at at having to pay for it and not being able to use CPA money.
Okay.
One thing I did look up is the Ferrari property will be, I believe, two thousand twenty-six. We're all done paying for, for the Ferrari property. Now, Brian, I, I don't know if you got a chance to, to look at the numbers that Bonnie got from me.
Yep.
I don't know if you shared it with these guys or not, but there was, Brian has some information on on, like, a ten-year bond, a twenty-year bond, and I think it was a ten-year V A N, I.
Yeah.
What, I don't know what that stands for.
That's the same, same thing.
Okay, awesome. But I guess that is supposed to be cheaper, and, but you can only go for ten years. So I asked Bonnie to give us numbers for the full amount, and for, if we put, like, two hundred thousand dollars down on the project, and, you know, to give, to get numbers for, you know, the six, six hundred and eighteen instead of eight hundred. So, you know, that information is, is in there, and it's, you know, it's not cheap, but as I say, you know, if we're not going to be, currently, I think the last payment on the Ferrari property is, I think the, I think it's seventy-five for the principal, and, you know, less than, I, I think it came, altogether, it came to seventy-six something, or less than seventy-seven thousand dollars for the last payment at the end of, at the end of the twenty-sixth, of two thousand twenty-six. So, in any case, I mean, that's, you know, that's something that's going to be going up, going off the books, so that's something we could consider for our cost.
Yeah.
But it, it just depends on, you know, what people want to do with that old building. You know, you can't let it sit there and waste away.
No.
And.
What is it, what is it used for?
Harold has some great suggestions, I think.
But, but like, what does it use for right now?
It's after school, before school programs.
So like, part of the day, each week?
And the school.
That's.
The four and a half.
The four and a half.
And during the day, during the day, I think there's, I think there's workspaces there for, you know, teachers, administrators, I'm not sure, but I know when we went down there to, when we took, you know, the architects down, looked around, there were people working in there, but they don't have classes.
Okay.
Right.
I see Raf, your hand, Rafael, your hand was up?
So it's a kind of combination, we split four classes. Then stop. Now, it's like, this whole after-school and before. I think John, I think some programs are there. And I think now, it's kind of helpful, again, lots of film takes place there, I think, having a purchase space for that. I know, it is for the.
Well, it has a lot of potential. I mean, it could be used for other things in the future. Yes.
Always the top.
Yeah.
It is like a, a community building, you know, so we do, totally, work for life and growth, but again, it comes down to that.
Right, doesn't everything?
This is the one, but, I know, I'm really gonna share it here. You're all pretty, I don't know, going back to the budget and looking and trying to earmark more of the disaction. I know they're, like, all, well, I know they are looking at that. Or, so it's, it was pretty adamant, both through our conversations, out of the last school committee meeting in general, she brought this up. And again, that was last week, or a couple of weeks ago, she thinks that Rafi seems to be supporting, sharing the business. Uh, Rafi is the senior. Also, so she's looking at that, I think, and now they have the application process. It's a mixed situation. And, because of the, but it's been, it's been, we're, it's, it's our ways to do it. I know she's pretty, the parish area region, really.
The problem is, with using rotten CPA money on this building, of course, is in order to, in order to use money on a, on a project that is, you know, not, you know, another town building, I think they would have to require us, like we did with the McLean property, they would have to require our preservation, sure. Yes, in here, but I don't see, I, I, I don't see any reason why they would. You know, that's something that is, unless you're spending money on, you're, if you're spending money on something that is privately owned, you know, now with, you know, because it's a district thing, I don't know if that would make it difficult to knock, but.
But it is town property, though.
Public property.
Public property, yeah.
You may not need it, they may want it.
Yeah.
But it's, so it can't be used for, like, school admin space? Does it meet those credentials, correct?
Why not?
I, I don't, I'm asking a question.
I mean, for their executive offices?
Yeah, I mean, so I guess I'm having a tough time thinking of.
It, it was looked at a long time ago, and there are some access issues. You have to put an elevator in the building.
Yeah, that's what I was.
This doesn't cover that. This is just a fluff and buff.
Yeah.
And so it wasn't, we weren't able to put the administrative building in there because it needed elevators, fire alarm system, all that, just, there was too many, there were way too many issues with it, and that's why it didn't get used, but I, I agree with what Joanie's saying. What do you do? Just click, leave it there and let it rot?
No, you can't do that.
And, you know, I don't know what potential uses the building would have post, you know, refurbishment, because it's got these handicap issues. You can't.
Right.
You gotta have exit signs, emergency lights, and fire alarm, all this stuff, and then you gotta have accessibility, right?
Well, that, that building has access through the Swallow, through the Swallow building, right?
Do the libraries get into it?
Not to the second floor, that's just.
Right, yeah.
It even meant it's in a staircase.
Yeah, you have the library.
And so we, from what we understand, the only school programming is, that's, you said before and after school programming, and that's privately funded by the families in Maple Village, right?
No.
Town pays for that?
No, it's, it's, there's an after-school program. Led.
Are you, are you asking, does B for using the after-school program? I don't know, I would imagine it is.
It's the, we're just gonna use that.
Okay. It, it just seems, this makes me think of ARPA and the water program, where it's gonna help the town, but it only benefits a certain part of the town. You know, it's like this greater, broader conversation of what it means to the town, and for an eight-hundred-and-twenty-thousand-dollar building that, like Ron said, it's, it's the aesthetics.
But it's an asset to the town. This is a historic building.
Absolutely.
We can't just let it deteriorate.
Sure, I mean, I'm playing devil's advocate here, but it's an asset, but to what? To the look and feel of driving by? I don't know.
It's maybe use for it in the future. We have the town center overlay. There could be, at some point, who knows?
Yeah. But if you have kids in there, you can't have private business in there, because it could be the melding of school.
Well, at some point, the kids may not need to be in there, because Bratton's taken their elementary school out of us anyway, right? So.
Right, I mean, when I went to school there, I just, kind of, like, things, took math, science, all the classes, and moved them. And that, I mean, was, was this, was extra classes.
Right.
All of this, actually, hundreds of years, it's just been manageable, and to hear it all apart, it's not, being an ADA.
An ADA requirement as well, when you use that parts of the building, so it's, until you get those caught up, which is probably, let's see, two million dollars worth of work inside the building, is my guess, where it starts.
I mean, when you see water, it's all. You know, they went down to the basin, it was a core.
Yeah.
You know, they were just, bathrooms, you know, it's tied up in showers, you know, open up.
Yeah.
So to play devil's advocate, to your devil's advocate, what do you think should be done?
I think the cheapest possible exterior restoration project should have. Because that's all the building is.
Brian, you didn't say to tear it down.
You could build them a whole other space, right?
Yeah, I mean, I didn't say it, that shit. Right? Because what else, it, it's, it's usability is dwindling. It's, it's just.
You can't use it without a much larger capacity.
Yeah.
I know that's not, no one wants to hear that, and it has this nostalgia, and cultural significance, and that's the building, spending a million dollars on a building that you don't use much. Do you have other money to pay for services that you need? Well, there, no, there's, okay, you're right, I agree with you, but I would caution that the, the, the building will immediately fall to disrepair. And, and. I know the, I know no one's doing that to town. Yeah, I, I, it's just, that's that. We're here about whether we fix it historically accurately, whether we. I don't think. Decide the historic status and, and do something. Yeah, I don't, I don't, I, I, along with this aspect of it, right, this fluff and buff approach to it, right? You know, what's the feasibility of the building on a go-forward basis, you know, what, what, what are possible uses for it that we could go to the town and say, look, we're gonna fix this up, and it's gonna become this or that. We went through, and I was involved in it, when, when the school administrative district had to move out of the school they were in, over to the high school, or middle school now. There was a lot of time spent over there, figuring out how to put an elevator in the place, and it just became not cost-effective. And, you know, we could spend nine hundred K fixing this thing up and just have it sit there, and, you know, I, that's. Well, it's gonna get used for after-school. Yeah. They're gonna use it as auxiliary program space when they need it. But even so, with that, with, I don't know what the reduction in school population is over there, but it's pretty substantial. I would guess that they'd have sufficient space in in Swallow for their after-school programs. I don't know, what, what else would you use the thing for? It's kind of a nice building. It's kind of a nice building, you know, and once fixed up. I've been at some of the Boston schools when they get rehabbed and they really look good. And they're welcoming, but I don't know what we do with that. I don't, I don't know what, I don't know, I just don't.
I don't think you find out what. You know, might, what it could be used for as long as the school. Has built.
Yeah.
You know, once the school, you know, if, if the school is not using the building. Then, you know, I think you'd have more people coming. Forward and saying, hey, you know, let's do this, let's do that, you know?
Then you have to look at these other costs, right? But we're only talking a million dollars just because of the thing.
Oh, yeah, now you're looking at all the rest of it.
No, it's not just repainting. There's a lot. There's a lot of work.
Lead requirement is insane. It's just like asbestos.
Mostly the lead.
Yeah.
That's what it is.
Rafi?
Well, that's the thing, it's such a curious point to be able to do this just. And. Specifically restoration, if you want to fix something, you do it right, you know? You don't wanna come back, uh, here, you better come back in twenty years. By year, you just do a cheaper option. But then they're just gonna see me jumping out of here to you. And I mean, yes, it's a big price there, but it's all. If you wanted to go right, you're getting the lead out, but you said all that stuff. It's out. Um, and I, it's always perceived to be my tenets, so. So I don't know what they did before, but whoever they got. Did not do a job. And that was a couple of years ago, ten, twelve years, ten, twelve years now. Or like.
What year wasn't the research banned in one year? Didn't they?
I don't remember.
A while ago now, but I don't know who paid it the last time.
I guess I would also wonder if, if in. Say in three years, there's no, there's no children in there because rotten kids have left the district or left Swallow Union. And then where the building is deemed empty. Will we be uncovering the work that has just been done in this exterior envelope assessment? To, to get it up to snuff for interior usage? Like, you know, they're likely gonna rip out windows and sashes.
Yeah.
And stuff, and I'm like. Then that, this eight hundred and twenty K.
Will in part be redone.
Will, will, will be in part lost, lost value.
Right.
I'm pushing through that, I think, well, I'm telling you, like, I went to school now. I was every student. With Mr. Bean and Mrs. Sappley and blah, blah, blah. But there's no elevators. There's, it's, it's not a senior center. There's accessibility is why. And I hate to say it, but you know, I'm still a little embarrassed that I have this perspective, but here, I agree with you saying it was important investment.
We were fighting for parking over there as it is with the church.
Because I love the building, it's part of my heritage, my life, but I think maybe we're wrong. What is the cost to make it effective and accessible for other purposes?
Yeah.
Are we building ramps? I, I, I mean, and again, say. You know. A bay and et cetera.
How much did it cost to put this elevator in this building?
So I think what it is, I think the elevator in this building was about two hundred and twenty thousand. So I was in the committee to meet the town hall, so.
How many years ago?
Was that?
How many years ago?
It's in the black.
Twenty something.
But it was expensive. It was really expensive. I remember this elevator has three stops, right? Yes, so I remember like having three stops, the separate doors to open, it went to increase the cost of, and I remember it's hiring. Is that a ramp with the elevator and it really opened the cost of renovations, so.
Yeah.
So we put an elevator in one of our. Teen center buildings where I live. Two thousand fourteen, that's three full floors, not three. A brief. Was that worth? It cost us six hundred thousand. Six hundred, so. And again, this was, I, it would be better if it was eighteen twenty years ago. So we tried, I was, I was just hard to thirty thousand dollars.
So to put an elevator there, we're looking at like a million dollars.
Oh, at least all, well, this is hydraulic. You can't use hydraulic elevators anymore.
Right.
Yeah, you can't.
So, so again, right, Brian, if you want to fix this, fire and structural integrity or weights for all of it, it's, it's, it's big to your point, this works off the base.
Yeah, piston.
There's no mechanics that are upstairs.
Wow. Can we just use a dumb lighter and have someone pull the string and go on the windows?
Can we just paint it white and move on?
What's that? No, they are, I, I don't think, because it's a historical restoration. They're not, uh, they're not talking about, uh. You know, anything like that, you know, they're talking about fixing the building as is, as is, as it used to be.
So what's?
At the same time, you know, you wanna talk about a senior center. Uh, I don't know how much it would cost, I mean, the senior center is probably quite a ways in the distance, but, uh. A senior center, uh. You know, the cost of, uh. Of putting an elevator in that building. Would, uh. Would not be on the usual.
That'd be a great spot for a senior center.
What?
Yeah, I mean, if that's gonna help us make real decisions, we should know what it would actually cost to, to make this building usable and compliant and.
Yeah, and HVAC, it's updating the bathrooms, it's widening the doorways, it's putting an elevator in there and it's cleaning it out.
Aren't there any exemptions because it's an old building?
No.
Not when it comes to ADA.
No.
Laugh, charge you whatever.
Yeah. Okay.
Um, what, so focusing on the assessment front of us, cause it's thorough and it's really good.
Yeah.
What type of money do we have in the historic CPA budget to cover this? Was it fully covering everything? What was sort of the philosophy here?
Uh, there's, uh. You know, there's a fair amount of money in CPA, the historical. Uh, reserve, I believe, has somewhere in the neighborhood of about three hundred and twenty five thousand.
Okay.
Um. I'm not quite sure I got the, uh. Uh. I asked Lisa for, uh. Some updated pages and she sent them to me. I'm not sure exactly what's in the, uh, the unreserved, uh, account. Um. But like I said, I think there would be plenty of money. I mean, the CPA would pay for the whole thing. But it would have to be over a period of time.
Okay.
So if you borrow the full amount for twenty years, say your debt service payment, the low forties.
And they get, you put forty, you put forty thousand, I hate to do that in this term. You put forty thousand in our last. Um. Our last payment, you know, even ten percent has to go into each pie every year. And last year, I believe it was forty thousand for each, um. The historical, the conservation, uh, the community has. Um.
One thing you could do if you decide to, to do this and borrow the money. When you issue your bond, you can waive the principal repayment for up to five years. So for instance, if you were to put this on May. And got approved. You could waive the principal for the first couple of years until that for purchases.
To just keep that. Swinging it, yeah, swinging it back and forth, yeah.
To make it smooth everything out financially.
And it's the right assessment to do it if the building was usable inside, right? It'd be a no brainer if you have people.
If you had that report that said these are the other things that need to be done to make this universally usable, you could take those items and cost those out.
Yeah.
Are those in there?
No.
No, no. She didn't do it, I didn't see it.
This is just, this was just an evaluation.
Yeah.
So what needs to be done for restoring outside?
So what would be another seven brand to probably figure that out, to have an assessment on the inside?
Maybe, but I mean, if there was already a report down there, there's a.
Was there?
Well, he said.
I think the school district had a, an evaluation and they were, there was talk about moving them in there. And. I, it just got, it just didn't go anywhere because of the cost of trying to get the building to.
How do we get our hands on that?
I don't know. We could ask Marlena. Rafi, if you wanna ask Marlena if they, if they still have that. Um, the, the grounds, building ground, grounds guy, Steve, I forgot his last name. He, he had that.
He's long gone.
He's long gone. He is long gone. The document might still be around someplace. And even from then to today, like hydraulic elevators can't use anymore. That's been two, this is the second year now. You can't run hydraulic elevators in a building. And that was talked about as being a hydraulic, so there's a lot of stuff that could change. But there, there might be a report kicking around over there that might help us with some guidance. I don't know, you can ask. And then the ultimate.
Actually, there was a report in the building. Like on a shelf in the basement. I don't know if it's the report, but it, there was a report in there.
It might need more.
Yeah.
That's what they did with it.
Field trip, it's like a walkover.
Yeah.
I mean.
Yes.
I don't think you'll be able to email it, cause it's probably, it was done a while ago. It's probably just a paper copy. And Steve, I forgot his last name. Burnt, was it? Yeah.
He's gone anyway.
He's been gone now a few years, but he, he, he was involved and I was on the capital committee for the school district and. I remember them, there being a report, just a paper report.
It's almost like if it could become an administrative space for the school. Maybe that keeps some of. Gotten involvement within Duncel that way, maybe they need more space to, you know, there's. Rejoining.
Yeah, kind of hopeless quarters in the back.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Like it's trailers and things like that, or not, maybe it's, I don't know, I don't.
Yes, they're.
Just trying to think creatively.
There's a building built there, yeah. But they use it? I don't know, I guess they could.
Yeah, otherwise I speak for myself, but I would be on the do it cheaply, fluff and buff, paint it white. Keep it looking nice for a handful, couple of years.
Well, if we do that, I mean, I'm not. The CPC hasn't even gone through, reviewed this yet as a group, so. But. I'm kind of curious as to know what it would take. To do the inside and actually make it a fully usable building. So what if the school decides to move out of there? What, what are we gonna use it for? You know, it's.
Offices for us, I guess.
Right, it's a great location.
Do we need them for another meeting space in town? I, I don't know.
The windows have all been replaced.
Yep.
I believe, but I don't think the inside is in that bad a shape. Was that redone not long ago? I mean. I thought, I thought at one point somebody told me that it was, uh. I mean, it wasn't, you know?
I think the only thing that was done was a good, a deep cleaning. And they may have just done some painting, but we did those windows probably what, ten years ago now?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think recently there's some paint aids and some mark inside.
Yeah.
But that's.
Well, one thing that we definitely do need, Rafi, and, uh. I think that's something you can, uh. Help us with is, uh, we need to know what the district agreement, uh, the, the numbers from the district agreement. For, you know, I, I know Marlena said there was a break, certain breakdown depending on how many. Rock kids, how many Duncel kids. You know, just to figure out who, if we do decide to just go with a paint job like, uh. Uh, Kieran, uh, wants to do. Uh, that's gonna, that will not be paid for with CPA money. That's, that's gonna be cash. Okay, and, uh.
I think you said fifty, right? That was the number that.
That's what they had just said.
And that you can forget about that, you know, that, that, that even just to paint it, you're gonna have to do a lend of eight. On it, so, uh. You know, when, when Ryan, when Ryan was on the school committee, he got a, he got a price. Uh, for, it was over a hundred thousand dollars. Just to paint it, just to paint it, it had twenty five hundred dollars for repairs. And so you know, you know, there was no, you know, all they were gonna do is, uh.
Paint it.
Paint it and, uh.
Which, I mean.
And we're back here. Well, we'll be back here again in five years because, yeah.
That's it, that's it.
Twelve percent less than.
Unless we, uh.
One eighth of what it is right now.
Yeah.
And that was, how long ago was that? Yeah, that was, uh.
Couple of years ago.
Few years ago, so.
Pre-COVID.
But anyway, Ryan, you know, you, you know what I'm talking about, races.
We have to record it right now.
Okay. Just so we can figure out. You know, the percentage. Um. So I don't know, as I say, it's, it's. I would hate, I, I hate like hell to spend almost a million dollars. To do this, but at the same time. You know, I also hate to not do a job right, so we have to decide. Uh, it's a decision that we have to. You know, have to make.
If we just paint it and kind of do, you know, the, a maintenance sort of thing right now, and the problem, the, the problems aren't going away. They'll still be there for us to address. In five years when we have an idea of what.
When we.
Other options maybe.
More money.
Yeah, when we have that much more money. Yeah.
Well, the money tree will have grown a bit more by then, and we'd be.
Watering it, you know?
Powerball.
We could always turn it into a marijuana, uh, retail.
That's true, we could do that.
Make it a dry house.
Senior Center Marijuana Dispensary, yeah.
Maybe a blinking sign.
You can fire up your grill and, yes, Jimmy's Grill.
Yeah.
Kit stop.
Yeah.
Leah's cabin.
That's right, my little gardens out there.
So.
Uh, alright, so this, this project has a lot of moving parts, it seems.
A lot of arms.
A lot of arms. It's sort of Medusa right now, um. So we've got a lot of information. It sounds like we kind of need to try to find and pull together and. We're meeting, CPC's meeting next week?
CPC is meeting the twenty fifth.
Yeah, okay.
And historical is meeting the twentieth, so I'm hoping to sit in on that.
Okay.
What's that?
Is that in person?
Yeah, I think that's, that's always on the, uh. That's always on the. Yes, yeah, they're twenty. But, uh.
Alright.
One thing I did wanna ask, uh. We do have that after these meetings, I need to set up a meeting with Lynn.
Okay.
To, uh, discuss this assessment, because they're gonna wanna get paid. Uh. So, eh, eh, did you have, uh, were you able to get a, a, enough of a look at it that you felt it was, uh? You know, uh, they did a, a reasonably good job. It looked to me like they did, but once again, I mean, yes. You know?
I think the report looks.
These good reports, fantastic.
Very good, yeah.
Okay, so you were, you were happy with the assessment?
Yes.
You weren't happy with the price?
No, I, I don't love the number, but the report itself is good, but I did.
Okay, alright, so we can pay the bill when the, when the time comes.
I would think so, yeah.
Brian, from your expertise to cover everything that's supposed to happen.
Okay.
It is what it is.
Yeah.
So general, is the general feeling of the board then, that we should, uh? We should think about, uh. Not spending all that money and just try to get a little paint on it and, uh. You know, maybe. I know, I know, I think I, I had mentioned before that, uh. My good buddy Henry Fontaine had expressed an interest in bidding on this job.
Mm-hmm.
But at the same time, he said, he, he told me that it would cost a fortune. To scrape that, you know, building down and, uh. Uh, at this point, I don't know if he would be interested. I thought about giving him a call and asking him for a quote. If he'd be interested in quoting the work. Um, just to get a ballpark, just to get some idea of what the, the.
There's a break and just, I don't remember what, if the number in there, what it was to just do a, a paint.
Yeah, it was seventy five percent of the, it was five hundred and something thousand.
So seventy five percent.
No, seventy, that, that was a seventy five percent of the, of the eight hundred and eighteen, right?
So that's six, seven.
Okay, sorry.
That's okay.
Just to paint it.
Just, yeah, just to paint it. Just, yeah, just to paint it their way.
Their way, okay.
You know.
I don't know if I'm, I'm really, I need to read it.
When you look at it, if you were gonna do it that way.
Yeah.
And then also.
It's ridiculous not to just go the rest away, because there's not much, the, the rest of the cost doesn't amount to much. Fixing the windows, fixing a few things.
Right.
Over there. It just doesn't, if you're gonna spend over six hundred thousand to paint the thing, then, uh. Then there's not really much point in not just borrowing the.
I don't know if I'm. I don't have the report memorized enough to say if I'm. Want to just can that all together and just do a quick paint, I, I, I think.
That's fine, if you know, there's no, I was just, uh.
Yeah.
It sounded like we might be, you know, uh.
I kind of want to have a little more information, you know, i- i- if we go that route, in my personal opinion, I'm not speaking for the board or anything, but.
Three seventy-five.
If it's just to paint.
It's, uh, strip, dispose of lead containing paint, prime, I spelled prime wrong, and paint all woodwork, it's three seventy-five.
Three seventy-five.
Probably half the cost.
Okay.
And we can't roll paint, just paint into restoration? This is the assessment. Yeah, so they give you a probable cost, so we still have, we could still have a, a Henry Fontaine or X, Y, Z historic restoration company to come out and fit up.
It is a lot.
Who, uh, who did the town hall? I can't remember the guy's name.
McDonald.
Mike, yeah.
Mike McDonald, you know him?
Very well.
You see if you can get him in here, over there, and, uh.
He's vinyl sided, like white?
Yeah, that's vinyl sided.
I mean, they make a nice historic looking single, though. They do, some, some of the certainty products, pretty good, so, I, I don't know, I just.
You're gonna probably pay him on the same day, so he might have this done.
Yeah, he.
Yeah, it's.
Eight hundred and twenty thousand dollars, even if the COVID costs and all that, that's a lot of money.
Well, yeah, nothing says that, I mean.
Because they're gonna do a right to Karen's point, it's terrible, doing a job is important, right? Because, you know, we can do this job halfway, and it's, we'll be redoing it in five years, not have something that's a, kind of over the top or.
Right now, we're talking about two different versions of the quote.
Yeah.
We're talking about.
Bare bones.
We have actor, to repaint the building. Uh, you should go put a quick coat of paint on it, and.
Make it look nice for the Wednesday concerts, and that's about it.
They're gonna be two different, like that three seventy-five is really high, because we're talking about methods accepted by the department.
Yeah.
Right.
You're talking about, okay, we're gonna disregard the historical nature of building.
And just paint it.
That's gonna be much lower estimate.
Well, i- i- it'll be more expensive to take, to redo it down the road, a hundred percent, like guaranteed, you're gonna.
Of course.
You're gonna build in a hundred K, you're gonna throw on top of it in five years.
Uh, you know, yeah, it needs to be painted, no matter what. It's, it looks terrible, and it's just making the general structure of it worse by being exposed. So at least it shouldn't be painted, but just being painted, that's gonna have to be paid cash out, we can't do CPCs for that. If, you know, if the school district is fifty thousand, is designated to this, or is that just capital money they put towards?
They have less than, uh, superintendent said, they have less than fifty thousand dollars year on, for the paint, uh.
Can you paint it for fifty thousand, Jimmy?
It's too high.
You need scaffolding.
Yeah, right.
The problem is that what makes that's the need at Ariel?
Yeah.
So like, I committed to move the general to the roof on the higher level, and the cost was increased double just because of the fact that you have this fact.
Would it make sense to get a quote just for? Just putting a Band-Aid on the issue right now and painting it, make it look better, protect it a little bit?
That might be, uh, I'm not sure if, if, I, I'll, I'll talk to Henry, I, I'm not sure if he would do.
Yeah.
Or if he, if he does historical, uh, restoration, I think your buddy there does, I think that's what we need.
Yeah, I know Gary, yeah. Yeah.
Um, there's also Brian Staley. So what I would suggest, I think if you talk to, uh, I'll talk to him, and, and let's, let's do that, and not like have them in competition, because it's gonna be a fair, really low, but I can think of medical, we do, we do, we guess that's, that's fair.
You have to go out to.
Yeah, that's size of project.
And again, like to Brian's point, like, we just have to make sure we're all talking about the same thing, and Brian, thank you, like, we should, I, I think I'm getting a little lost too, like, asking, because.
Well, what we are talking about, so, I mean, the building obviously needs work. As I'm hearing everything, it needs to be painted, do we just do that, protect it, buy it some time? And in the meantime, figure out what is the true future viability, what, what are the actual uses, what would it cost for us to invest in the building? To make it useful beyond after-school programs? You don't want the building to just sit there and do nothing for eternity, if we're gonna preserve it, you know, if we do, if we paint it now, just do the quick paint on it. Buy it some time, and then continue to figure out what our options are, we can get an assessment of what it takes to do the inside, and then we could wrap it all in together. Doing the restoration the right way, and maybe any upgrades to make it ABA compliant, whatever.
Are you thinking, are you thinking, uh, painting it? Um. You know, doing the painting the properly, doing, you know, just doing as far as restoration is concerned, just doing that aspect of it? And not doing some of the other things, or are you just, you just saying slap a coat of paint on there and, uh, because I mean, there's no.
Give me two years. Right, like.
Something thousand dollars to pay. If that was, if that was truly the cost, I don't believe it is, but.
Yeah.
If that is truly the, the cost, um, you know, they could pay for that after a while. But, uh, so.
I guess I'm saying that, I just kind of like to work with a lot of data from the different aspects of what we're even considering here. I'm not throwing this, you know, full restoration off the table completely, but if, if, if that's gonna only get us to a building that has now been restored historically correctly. But is limited our use going forward, is that really the best investment for it? Do we find out what we can actually use this building for going in the future? Find out what that's gonna be, and then wrap in the restoration at that point, if we get to that point, does that make sense?
Yeah, absolutely. And it might be helpful to know whether the school's gonna plan to use that building five years, or is it one, then plan to be, take it out and steal the style of, against the population, and.
Shut that part of the building.
Once they build that school, right, that rotten kids are all going there.
There'll still be a need for the, uh, there'll still be a need for before and after.
But will they be rotten kids?
No, but there might be, actually, there might, there would probably be room in the small building for.
Yeah, they'll shift.
Yeah.
That. We can get our school building back.
Who owns the building? Town or Dunsell?
Yeah.
Yeah, whether they rent it or not.
Yeah. Alright.
Sell it to the Dunsell Royal Land Trust, then when it's privately held, the regulations on it could change, it's true.
Then we don't have to be ABA compliant?
Then it's just, then it's just, yeah.
But we couldn't have, well, whatever, getting rid of ourselves.
I know, that's a creative.
Alright, so I don't know if we came up with any decisions or answers, but we certainly talked about it.
We decided that we needed to get some kind of an idea of how much it would cost just to, uh, just to paint the building and, and, you know, go to the mayor, I guess.
And get an idea of what it would be to actually make it a fully useful building for a senior center, or Jimmy's Pot Shop, or whatever it's gonna be.
Jimmy's Pot Shop.
It's gonna take me a long time to program a lot. It's not gonna be easy.
Go with the beard, go with the ZZ Top beard.
I think you can get any plans now, okay?
Oh, yeah, you probably, probably can. Yeah, Wes Welker did it.
Let's move to our part.
Alright, let's move on, we done with this one?
I think we're done.
Alright. Next thing that is out of order is the further continued discussion of COVID and rescue fund monies.
Yeah, so we, uh, we talked about this breakdown.
Yeah.
It is, uh.
Do we have this?
Comes twelve nine.
Yeah.
This is what we had gelled on that evening, it's, uh, there's a two-sided spreadsheet there. So that's what we talked about, and you, when we came together on this, I mean, you asked me to follow up and get the estimated cost of the last segment of the water.
Right.
To go from the governing wall. Interseptional wall.
Yeah.
And down wall, so, so that's on the back. That last segment would cost three hundred thousand dollars.
That's not too bad.
It's not too bad, but you still may have, you still may have a million dollars to work with, so I took a shot at if you wanted to do that. There's a couple ways you could do it, alternative number one, you gotta cut out all the money that, to go to the school district. Reduce the amount of money from stormwater. Alternative number two, you can do the school less. Two hundred and seventeen thousand instead of two hundred and seventy, and you scrap all the other uses, pretty much except for the water, doing the water project.
Can I get this to that, or just us for?
Yeah, this is extra copy.
You guys want a copy, still?
Then there's other ways to do it, but that's just the illustrative two ways to do it.
Yeah.
You know, you can't do, you can't do all the other things.
Right.
And do all the water name, and from school. The other thing that's changed since the last discussion, was that the feds issued their final rule, and in the final rule, they threw out all the rules that we talked about up to this point.
Yeah.
So all the discussions we had in the past six months about trying to shoot more on this potential use and that potential use are now pretty much irrelevant. You can use this money for a broad range of government activities with little justification.
Yeah, if it's under a million, they don't care what you use it for, basically.
So, you know, you could go back and look at, turn, put things in, like the A V replacements we had in there at one point. For example, that was an existing capital project that it was on this year. We could go back to the drawing for the total, but it kind of feels like we, we had some consensus on the discussion from December. I'm expecting, probably just to keep what we have, but if you really do want it.
I think it's important to do the MS four retro, because that, we have to do that at some point. And we have to come up with that money at some point, regardless.
So what, obviously, is the difference of school funding, right?
Yeah, so in the, in the top one there, there's no school funding. You keep the other, you keep most of the stormwater, you keep the house over the lease, performance pay. Remote, remote support, and then, you know, so, but that's pretty extreme, but not keep the school unaffected, so.
Yeah.
You know, but now look at alternate number two, you've got the school getting two hundred and seventeen thousand instead of two hundred and seventy thousand, and then pretty much, the rest of your funds are in the water project, doing the water project. And the only other. The only other way I can think of to fund that last water means, if indeed that is, there is an affordable housing project down being.
Or the developers could consider putting it in, I mean, we don't, we don't know what's going on down there, I, we can't predict what someone is going to do with their privately owned property. Anyway, so, to. Spend three hundred thousand dollars to what may potentially happen on a private property.
We do step off, right? And the difference is, the first two water main segments that we've talked about before tonight, to the McGovern wall and up, um, Hillcrest. Are gonna occur in the road right away, that's gonna be right up. Alright, they're not, the last one that goes from the McGovern wall to Wood Street, we're not planning on digging that out this part of the.
That's right.
So we get a cut and cover.
Well, I think it's really important to do those two, at least the Hillcrest section, and move that through.
Are you, are you looking at the two hundred and thirty thousand dollar number?
Yeah.
Yeah. You know, we, we, we have a lot of money in the water system, and I don't know, it's a black hole even going forward, the way the debt's structured, just not a healthy situation. And so, I, I think that, in my own opinion, that three hundred K, I don't know if that's part of the discussion, I just don't.
Yeah, I, yeah, I, I, I'm very happy, thank you for getting that information. I don't want to not give money to the school. I personally think getting the MS four project done is really important, because that's gonna either end up as a debt exclusion or something in our future anyway, and if we can prevent that from going on the tax base, I would like to do that.
Yeah, you're all looking at this one.
I'm looking at the original one he gave us, yeah.
Me too. Okay, so we're sticking with the original plan?
Karen, we haven't heard from you at all.
This is the original.
This is the original.
That's right.
That's original.
Uh, Raf, Raphael, for the school system, you guys also got the same leeway with, it's almost a blank check, right, the schools did? For what things can be spent on, do you have a final number for what the schools got, that you can share with us? Okay. Somewhere in there.
I don't have it in my head, but they've sent us emails and information about all their other COVID money.
Yeah, I still like the philosophy that we, they had in there for splitting it out over two years, I agree with what we have up there.
The benefit to me? Oh, just. It wasn't, it was just understanding that it was a request for two hundred and seventy thousand dollars over two fiscal years, which is, we need two hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Sets it a big earmark to this here, right?
Yeah.
Is there more money coming with all the, I've started to read some rumblings.
Infrastructure bill?
Yeah.
But the infrastructure bill is being filed against existing state programs.
Okay, so we're not likely to get much. Okay.
It's gonna mean there's more money in state grant programs for you to pursue.
Okay. But our water department, in theory, could apply for an extension to the Hillcrest loop.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, they won't, they probably won't get it, but. Sounds like a good idea. And the difference, maybe I've missed this, as I was looking at the specialty, the one thirty-five versus one oh five in MS stormwaters, that just gives clarity on the numbers, or what?
No, what, what we, um, what we went through with the advisory board. They're working on a recommendation, we had water at MS, or, excuse me, at MS four, they're around a hundred. We have this residual amount of thirty-five thousand. And what we're trying to pinpoint was, this is when the rules still apply?
Yeah.
Maybe we might have a revenue loss in the next fiscal year, and if that's the case, we might be able to, to knock off on these little projects.
Okay.
The A Ds, so they said, why don't we take the thirty-five and just put it in the parking lot called MS four for the time being?
Okay. Okay.
And so that's how, that's why that
It's a bucket.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it seems like the right uses for the money. There's only one part of me that wishes we'd save, we could save like a hundred K just for, you know, shit fund to be part of the term. Right?
Except that, or shit fund has to be spent by twenty twenty-six. It has to be earmarked by twenty twenty-four and then spent by twenty twenty-six.
I mean, the closest thing here to the oh shit fund is the MS four because it's
Yeah.
So it's a bit more than numbers of nebulous.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cause I like acknowledging the folks that worked their butts off during this, I think that's important. I think the schools need the money as well and the water system is a, as Ron stated, kind of a black hole, which I agree with, it's it is what it is.
Yeah.
I guess that's just me talking on circles.
Okay.
I think we're all the same.
We're just gonna stick with the plan. Yeah.
Yeah.
So I'll, I'll let the school know.
But thank you for going through that exercise, Brian.
Okay.
Which is the plan here?
So the plan, the one that's the, just the
The single one. Yeah.
Yep.
All right. Boy, he's getting messy. Okay. So we're gonna jump back to
We, we, we did a fourteen, so we're just sticking with that change.
Yeah.
Literally myself, Jason, Marlena, the higher school committee, Laura, school administration, kids, students, faculty, teachers, really thank you. Really thank you.
All right, well, thanks for coming.
Well, I'll be painting the building together.
We'll be, we'll have a painting party.
I'll petrify the ladder, so I'm not going up. Send you right up.
Get a trampoline. Okay, so our next very exciting torturous discussion is going to be
Do you wanna do the town administrator one next?
Sure, we're just doing backwards on the agenda tonight, so. The transition plan regarding the town administrator position, so this probably kind of ties into reworking the whole jobs within the structure of so what do you got, Brian?
Well, uh, you know, I think some of what you do here depends on what your, your plan is with the charter.
Exactly.
If you were to, you know, I know you talked about Leah wanting to go out and replace the town administrator without needing much of an interim. Possible to an extent, we need to know what, what the plan is, what you're gonna put that job post.
Exactly.
Without knowing where you are with the charter, I'm not sure.
Right.
Make that attract those
That's
firm possibilities for somebody.
That's what makes us, and it's a really hard position, we're just like in purgatory right now, so until we get a charter, it's gonna be difficult for us to attract a really well qualified town administrator that has the experience because they are more than likely not going to want to accept a job that doesn't have the position of a town administrator solidified through a charter. So Brian's gonna be leaving us March eleventh, so that takes us till May, town meeting, and hope that the charter passes. And that really is the bulk of what the charter is at this point, is defining what that job is. Yeah.
Well, the charter has to go through trade-offs, right, to be approved?
Yeah.
And then they leave Brockaway, doing it once and once before.
Right, it could, could be, it, yeah, hopefully it'd be three years, like it was with some other things, but yeah. Yes.
If it passes town meeting, it's unlikely it's gonna get seriously tried by the state. So at that point, it's a matter of what can you get here?
Right.
State representative for you.
Yeah.
Seeing how that works, it doesn't
Yeah, great.
So Gerald's not wrong, but you know, the past town meeting and it would take, could take it could take a session or it could take two or three.
Well, even a town clerk, retool and pick a law.
Yeah. Yeah.
We've been at that a long time, so.
At least, you know, if it passed town meeting, you at least have the benefit of knowing that the voters here support what you're trying to do. You know, it's unlikely that a state legislator is gonna step in and say, well, we tinkered with this.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Right.
It's not possible, but it's just not, not very likely to happen.
Yeah.
I feel what you're saying about attracting, you know, you know, the best applicant, but what happens if it doesn't pass town, we can go back to where we were.
Right, well, again, that's sort of the, the hard situation we're in, so.
So
Yeah.
If it doesn't pass town meeting, what I would suggest to you is that you abandon having a town administrator calling it an executive secretary position. Need salary right where it is, at around ninety thousand. You don't really have a town administrator, it's one of the government right now.
We don't.
No, we don't.
You have a town administrator, you know, that, you know, had put in the budget in two thousand fourteen, never had these discussions about some of that, no, didn't bring it up.
No.
And it might go, well, that's on me, or it might not, you know. And that ties into the reorganization of the clerk and treasurer a little bit.
Right.
You know, if you have a more full-time president in office, that means what else you need. But right now, you know, if you were to go out, you're probably in the market in salary for town administrator. I don't know what your thoughts are about making it twenty hours, thirty hours of the time, but if you're looking at the time, you know, I can explain the budget.
For a T A.
For a T A.
Right. But it would be for an executive secretary. Full-time, it, you think that's a fair amount?
Yeah, I mean, that's essentially where we came from.
Yeah.
We did, we had an executive secretary.
What other towns do that like us in the area? Anyone?
No.
Okay.
There might be there might be six or seven, I, I pulled the salary survey a while ago, there might be six or seven of those positions statewide. Then I always call the executive secretary, sometimes it's like town coordinator or some other weird title.
So how is this person gonna be able to do what you're doing?
Well, they, they might not, I mean, if you go executive secretary, it's a lower set of skills and expectations and expectations.
Right.
Sometimes I'm doing those things and sometimes I'm not, but
Based on where the town is right now, it may not be what we need for moving forward.
Yeah.
It's a town, it sounds like.
Yeah, I mean, the layoff comes complicated.
Well, we could keep it simple for a little while until we get the charter passed and then we can pull in a T A.
You're out, you're out with that, you, you, you're way out with that, I, I just don't see that, I'm just exactly what he said.
Yeah.
That'd take you two years to get that to the state house.
I just assume it's going to.
Yeah.
It'd just be better off.
And yeah.
Worst case scenario.
Oh, absolutely.
Everything else takes forever, so.
No.
I'm not gonna be surprised now.
I know May is, I know May would just be the beginning of having this concept.
Right?
Yeah.
Saying a candidate right now, yeah, we might have a charter that you'd wanna work under.
That's one thing.
At town meeting, that's one thing. Saying to a candidate after town meeting, we passed this charter.
Right.
These are the things that it say about your job, and now just the state will approve it.
Right.
That's a different
Yeah.
That's a different cut level.
Yeah.
Saying that we might pass this at town meeting.
Yeah.
You're gonna be debating on the floor about it, the state's not really gonna believe it. You're gonna have their wherewill to look at it and say, well
This is technical, this is not, yeah. Yeah.
But whoever's in that role might be very useful for pushing it across, you know, the muddiness of a town meeting, because they can get muddy, I mean.
Well, that would be, I think that's really rich, which whether you decide, you know, to make Jake the mentor and see assistant town commissioner, you could find a difference.
Yeah.
If that's, if that makes everything more comfortable for you, but there's not an interested party advocating.
Yeah, I don't know what the temperature is.
I mean, you already have, you already have a consultant, you know, that's helped you get the charter at this point that you could use on town meeting.
Right.
Help you explain if you want.
Yeah, I know he
Yeah.
Doesn't have the best relationship with a couple of the members on that, from what I remember, during my time on that.
Oh, no, everyone's, where everyone's good. Everyone's good. We're civil to each other. At the end of the night, yeah.
Yeah.
One of them's in Iraq, so.
Joan?
Because I'm in the process of reading this, I'm sorry. Looks to me like about half of it are the duties of the town administrator.
Exactly.
Are, are you people on it?
He is.
Yes.
That's just, you're describing your job, it's not like whoever the hours is gonna have, your advice is what is what you're doing.
Yeah, I mean, that's a pretty broad statement to say, am I doing that now? I do a lot of that now, there's probably some things in there that the town administrator, their description will do, would be a priority that I can't do.
It's not a strong T A role right now. Which it would be in the current scope of the charter.
It's a much stronger T A in the charter.
Yeah.
I don't, yes, the T A in the charter has a lot on the authority of the personnel. You have a few different personnel management systems. You have a buy, you have a personnel buy-wall, that doesn't make it say town administrator. So that means each elected department is entitled to target that personnel line.
Now
And sometimes it do.
Yeah.
The town, uh, would be, if, once we have a charter, would we be hiring a town, a town manager or?
No, administrator, it would still be an administrator, not a manager.
And we can't, is, is it not possible just to get somebody, hire somebody as an interim?
Well, that's what we're trying to sort out, I mean, that's what's, yeah.
Until it's such time, because it's returning that, uh, whether the charter was in or out and has
Well, even if the charter is in and it goes to the state and they take twenty-four months.
Right.
How long is your interim in the interim capacity? Uh, you know
Right.
That, that's, that, you know, it, it's, I don't know, none of us know. And that's the mess we're in with this, you know, how long is the interim? And so you take, you turn around and go back, when, when we put the first town manager in, right, cause he's third.
Yeah.
You know, she got put in because the board of selectmen then said, look, we've gotta do this, let's put some money together. Never really got into much of, how does it fit in with town government? It was just basically, we gotta do something and we did it.
They created a line item.
Yeah, and that was, that was it, we created a line item in the budget, we said, this is what we're gonna pay, and, and the board of selectmen said, this is gonna be a first stop. And she was temporary and the second one didn't work out all that well, but it, it's what he said, there's no management structure in place. It says, look, this person functions here, this is what they do. It's, it's, you know, he's, he's just made it work because it's got the people chemistry to make it work. And now we're looking to codify and straighten it all out and he's out, he's gonna leave and, you know, an interim could be, interim could be a year. You have no way of knowing that.
So how do we, uh, how do we, how do we advertise that? How do we find this person?
Sort of thing, I mean, we hire an interim, you know?
There are, there are, you know, we had, when we searched for him, I'm just thinking out loud here, right? When we searched for him, there were a number of candidates, two in particular that I remember that were in interim roles in the towns that they were in and had been in those roles for a long time, like over a year, okay? You know, we could go back and to, to those and ask them, and so it was possible to, it, it is possible to do that, you know? One of the guys was a retiree out of Charlestown, remember him?
Yep.
Yeah. He, he made, and he was interested in, in, you know, for running it out for a couple of years and that was it for him.
Yeah.
So those, those folks do exist, but that's, it takes time and effort to find them. But I, I, I think that's the path we've gotta look at right now. Until the charter is solidified, we've gotta go with the interim, but because if we go executive secretary, that's gonna be more of a permanent role and, and not conducive to what we wanna accomplish with the charter. Let's say the charter goes through and passes the town meeting, goes to the state, and the state says, yeah, no problem, and a year, a year out, and you're in the executive secretary model, now what do you do with the executive secretary?
Right, exactly, yeah.
So this interim would seem to me as though that would be the step for us, and we should go out and advertise and dig a couple of those guys up that we had.
Yeah.
Couple of those folks were really interested in it and, and do that, and not only do we have that going on, we've got all the rest of stuff that's going on.
Right.
It's the
There's a lot, there is a lot going on.
Perfect storm of having a huge number of problems that that come from losing too many people at once that all had tribal knowledge of how the town functioned.
Right.
And, you know, this is a big deal, everyone's, we've got four major positions in the town that are all vacating in the next few months. So I, I, you know, we, I think we've gotta not try to boil the ocean here. And, and let's put, let's look after an interim right now, advertise for interim, for that person in as an interim in that capacity for some period of time, that's not all well defined until we figure it all out.
Until we see what happens in May.
Yeah, well, even beyond that, right?
Well, right.
I was only suggesting the secretary.
Yeah.
In the event that town meeting
Shut that, that charter.
If you delude that charter anymore, that town meeting, it's like throw up.
Yeah.
And you just go with the secretary, because then you don't have a T A.
Yeah.
If it passes.
But the, the, the T A is a, is a higher level of technical competence and higher educational value that is gonna bring us a better result. And so that, that ultimately is where we wanna go, and if the charter passes, then we're gonna be high-fiving that, that through it. And so when I, when I look at all these different plans, I think the interim is, is
Yeah.
is the, is the step that gets us to, to where we wanna go, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, no, I, I think you're right.
Yeah, my only question is, if you, if we advertised, if you were to advertise for a full-time town administrator role and you, and we capture a great candidate and they're paid as such and they help us get through the, like you said, four potential large roles over the next, let's say, year. I mean, do we have the bandwidth to do all that, to manage all that up? Doesn't, an interim has less skin in the game to be dedicated to the process, whereas if you hire someone full-time, you're paying them as such, it's a strong role in our view because they ultimately report to the select board. There is value in having that person to navigate this boiling ocean.
Yeah, but his, it, it goes back to what he said a minute ago, if you, it is the, the likelihood of finding a T A in, in, is in our salary range given the fact that that person doesn't have a well-defined job description, it is, you know, it's
I agree, yeah.
It's really mushy, and so the interim step, right, gets the town into the safe zone with not having an executive secretary that we committed to, because we had an executive secretary, she was here for umpteen years. Um, and, and so if we, if we go, if we do that again, then that person's gonna be on board for some period of time. And if we advertise and hire a T A, we're doing so with an understanding that we might get to this at some point in time, or we might not. Because it goes back to what he says, you don't know if that charter is gonna crash and burn on the floor of town meeting, you, you don't know that. And it could.
Yeah, maybe.
It could.
No.
And now we would have hired someone with an understanding that we're gonna get you there, but we're not quite there just yet, and that's
Yeah, yeah, I think that makes
And then we don't, I don't think we've got the salary in there to fund that, is it right, am I right? We don't have the dollars in there. We don't have the money in there for that, and so the interim kind of, this is just me, I'm thinking out loud, and the interim kind of brings, brings us the greatest benefit given what we've got to work with right now, dollars, a not well solidified position, someone that we need for some period of time that's not well defined, but it's certainly not infinite.
Yeah.
Right? Right? And so I think that that's what we, I'm wide open here, guys. That's what, that's my, my box.
No, I, I think you're right. I think we wanna stay on the TA path for as long as we possibly can. And if getting the interim is what's gonna get us over the first hurdle.
Well, that's what I think.
Getting the town charter passed, just a sec, right? Once we, um, getting us past that hurdle. Once it's passed and we have that position solidified.
We can go off and, and go to market.
Right.
Yeah.
We'll be locked into a budget on that town meeting.
We're gonna be locked into a budget. Yeah, I don't know how that's.
So then how do you, how do you, it, it hypothetically, in the, in the brilliant world that passes in May, and we still have to wait for it to get through state house or whatever. But we could be advertising for a full-time TA role as of July one fiscal year.
Of this year?
You could, you could, right?
I think that's a stretch, cause town meetings in May.
But you could, you could put it in advisory, you could put it in the budget as a hundred K, a hundred, whatever the number is.
Advisory's kind of already got their budget hatched out for town meeting, right?
We're not, we're not hashed out. We're incomplete, cause we don't have a fire department budget. Uh, but I guess what I would say is. There's no easy way to increase the town administrator's salary, no matter what you decide to do.
At some point, we're gonna.
So much money is spoken for our, you know, have that, you know, the fire department's gonna want more money guaranteed, you know, that might put you in override territory depending on what you decide to do with that. So that's one conversation, sort of. At the same time, I just don't see how you. Who are you gonna take that money from to fund the TA's salary? Unless you're saying you're gonna put it back out under market.
Which doesn't serve us well.
Which doesn't serve you.
It doesn't, but.
So we go for a part-time, then we can stick with the same amount.
Yeah.
Have now, I mean. And then once.
Your, your candidate pool will be limited for different, right? So you're gonna go get a full-time TA that's, or excuse me, a permanent TA that's gonna work part-time.
Yeah, and we were very fortunate with yourself in the role, because you worked, we all recognize you worked more hours than the role was defined. And to think we're gonna get that level of attention again is crazy.
Yeah.
And with all the complicated things we have ahead of us, I, I don't know. I, I, to, to Ron's point about going the interim route, I'm just going the other way, because I. I think the town would benefit from more, more structure. We were talking about restructuring within the town clerk, town accountant, town assessing roles, things like that, right? Like, I don't know, like.
But I think what he's saying is going with the interim is gonna attract some, because it's just an interim, a TA. And, you know, maybe someone who's retired or whatever is willing to step in and just say, okay, I'm gonna help the town out for a year or two, you know, may have six months, whatever.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't know why you need that person for. You at least need them until town meeting's over, right?
We need, yes, we need.
You at least need them until town meeting's over until you complete a hiring process for either a TA or an executive secretary, depending on what happens.
Right.
And then the question is, if it is a TA, permanent TA is a full-time role. And if it's full-time, then you're gonna have to do something. So, I, in my.
Yeah, no, I agree, yeah.
And that is, uh, that is not in the cards at this point, based on numbers, right?
Right.
Yeah. I mean, the revenue is not supported.
Revenue isn't supported.
And the, and the picture of the revenue forecast for the future is.
Rafi, you had a question?
Yeah, sorry. Why would it?
I hope it doesn't.
We don't, we don't know.
People don't like change. They may not fully understand what it's doing. They may feel one person's getting too much power. They may.
I encourage you to join those meetings.
We don't, you know?
I encourage you to join those meetings.
Have you read it?
No.
Well, read it.
It's light reading.
The government's pretty met at least eighteen times over three years.
We've been doing this for two and a half years. Two and a half years we've been working on this.
I don't often step down from boards, but that's one I love.
From the, from the town administrator is the school. Everybody else is, you know, under the direction, even that, that, that quite bothers me. They, you know, elected. Members of these committees are, uh, it's, you know, it's, in, in the language, it sounds like the, uh, you know. They, uh, you know, they, we told what to do by the town administration.
All right. Well, we're not having that discussion now.
Truly, I don't agree with that interpretation, but.
Yeah, that is my answer.
Okay, we're still. Yeah, yeah.
Right, so we, we at a point where we're gonna go with, we gotta take some charge here, cause he's, what, six weeks, eight weeks?
It's not long, yeah.
Yeah. And we gotta go through an interview process and we gotta cast a net and, you know, we, it took us, I don't know, probably took us eight weeks to hire him. I think it did.
Yeah. So going forward with an interim TA, we need to figure out what the time period should be. We could probably through the end of May or whenever. And then do a reevaluation, uh, whatever, six-month stint for the per, I don't know, whatever you think might be reasonable.
Just, it's gonna be a TBD, all right?
Yeah.
And it's gonna be some infinite amount of time.
Yeah.
And we'll, and we'll, we'll, uh, you know, it's gonna be like this, I forgot the guy's name, but he lived in Charleston and.
I remember, yeah.
He was.
You're talking about the guy that was out in Western Mass that used to be the Springfield man?
Yeah, he was in like Ashburn, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe, I don't know, he seemed.
He was an older man, yeah.
Templeton, that's what it was, Templeton, Templeton.
And there's a bunch of guys out of New Hampshire.
Who?
I bet I could find, okay.
I don't remember what it's.
Yeah, I know it was Charles.
It was.
Charles, what was his last name?
I thought his name was Charles.
It was Charles.
It was the guy who was the mayor just when he'd done some gigs in Western Mass.
Yeah. Okay.
I don't know, Charleston, I don't know, maybe that was.
He was living in Charleston. He was living in the Bay area, Charleston.
Manager here for ten years of the town in Esses County.
Okay.
How you guys remember all this? I remember, you know.
I'm only using him as an example, that there are individuals like that.
You'll have an easier time finding an interim, I think, than we will have finding a TA. There's lists, there's lists of people that are willing to put in time and make extra money while they're.
Okay, well, then that's good. We'll do that. And then once we're better set up to hire a TA after the charter gets passed at town meeting with Joan's blessing.
If it passes. And hope is not a strategy.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, so interim TA for an indefinite period, but not less than.
Yeah.
July one.
Yeah.
Till at least July one, right?
Right. Make it to.
Yeah, I would probably say till the end of July.
That would be the best, and it's at least till the end of July.
Yeah.
Possibly, whatever.
But on the other hand, well, let's think about that for a second, right? If we went to town meeting, let's say town meeting, everybody went, yeah, yeah, now it's to the state house. It's gonna take the state house. She has so many days to submit that to the state, right? They, they're, they're gonna take six months.
I know.
They're gonna, so I, I would hate to say to, in the advertising process, say to a potential candidate, um, you're gonna be here for four months. When the reality is, it's probably gonna be closer to a year.
I think, and I'm trying to say that, that's your, that's your comfort of that delay, or whatever comes out of town.
It's, it's, I mean, the.
Or seeking an interim TA for the next year while the town goes through a charter adoption process.
Yeah.
Should we be putting this to like a consultant or an executive location? I know there's somebody in town that does that for this role, so.
For the headhunter.
And the town center, they both maintain lists of people who are interested in the year next.
Okay.
LinkedIn.
But it'll be a part-time.
Part-time on an interim basis, yeah.
I think that's what we gotta do.
So you wanna try and have these reviews before.
Yes.
So. So it's a seventeen. We wanna say, uh. Resumes will be reviewed as received, but no later. That's close to enough.
Yeah, I think February, so February nineteenth is Saturday, so.
All right, so.
The eighteen. So it's a, I guess it's four weeks from today.
Yeah.
That should be reasonable.
Yeah, I can call a few people and I can get this list. So I was just gonna say, for an indefinite period, and salary will be.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
You okay with that?
I'm good with that.
Yeah, I'm just pondering it.
Ponder.
Probably leaving other meetings.
Probably would, absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Let's bang it out. You can do that, too. I, I encourage you to put it out there, put something out.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. Get that ball rolling with it.
Do we wanna loop in Hadad into any of this?
I was just looking for schools, I mean.
Well, we had Mark Hadad as a.
Yeah, he was with us for a month here.
With us for a while. He was, he's, he's, you know, I mean, he's a Hadad product. At the end of the day, he, he.
I mean, so, I know this is always fun talking about money, but with you leaving, we have to pay you out a certain amount of PTO and things like that. What's gonna be left in that bucket for salary? Right? Cause we have to have some. I don't know.
Babies at a time, I get to the eleventh, I'll accumulate a week and a half or two weeks.
Not a lot. Now, I'm just trying to think of how much money's left to say, all right?
Most of my budget, most of my budget will still be there, the remaining budget, right? So you still have a full quarter. Of TA salary.
Got it, okay. Eighteen? Uh, yeah, I don't know. Let's think about it. Let's get, get it advertised.
Yep.
Yeah.
I think that's a plan for now.
Okay. Next thing.
You know, maybe, given this discussion, I don't know, you know, does it really need the next discussion? Does it sound like we can answer a little question or answer?
But we can, we can just go through it.
Let's go through it. We're on the subject, so let's go through it.
Looking at this spreadsheet now. I have, I have one of these, yeah. So as you know, the, the town clerk's, uh, legislation to go to appointed has passed. Where again, the treasurer are planning on leaving their office this year. And this gives us the opportunity to consider a reorganization. And, uh, so, you know, what I'm looking at in the spreadsheet is taking the, the combined resources of those two departments. And the set, the salary of the assistant town administrator to combine the, the main role of the treasurer collective clerk into one full-time position. And have that backed up by assistant treasurer clerk. And that would really increase, you know, the service level that you offer to all when people are available to see the clerk for the treasurer. And right now, you know, that's, those are the gaps, right? Most people want to see the clerk for the treasurer. And they're there so much, and they're also here so much.
Right.
So that's a limited factor. And the clerk doesn't currently have an assistant, as we know. And this would create an assistant. And the benefit of that is the assistant town clerk by statute can't do anything the clerk can do. So, the clerk's not here, she's busy being treasurer, however they decide to provide those roles up, the assistant town clerk would help. If you were to do this, I'd recommend that you, you know, for the department, I'd actually hire from the treasurer's side, somebody that has more than that. The finance skills, than the clerk side. Because the clerk side's gonna be easier to hire. Try to go out on the clerk side, you're probably gonna have to find a candidate who's the mental.
Right.
Whereas the treasurer's side, it might be quite simply. There's a little bit of a, there's potentially a little bit of a cost savings after the first year. And you do eliminate the liability and paper of, you know, by buying these two positions, you eliminate the liability of another full-time benefit position. Which theoretically could be a costly, it's not right now, because both of these people don't take the benefits. You know, so it'd be great to put this into one full-time position. You know, the first year, you might not save as much money, because you might want an interim town clerk, but not to retire at the same time. Some consulting support if it's the national elections. So, you know, kind of padded that in. And then whatever you do with the town administrator, even, you know, you still need to ensure the support, the board's gonna need the support. So a budget of a figure to add back some of that, for taking minutes or general assistance, permanent assistance, that's just a placeholder. You might be able to expand this reorganization, because you're gonna have other returns. So you might be able to do a lot of other duties as well. Depending on what you do with the, the planning positions. So I, I mean, that's where I get to, okay, is this getting to have too many parts for interim TA? If I were staying, I will, I will propose to do this. If you have another TA, you probably will propose to do it too, because it's. I feel it's fair to stay on. My contract right now. I feel it's fair to stay on and make all these personal decisions, probably stay.
So let me ask a couple of questions, right? Cause I, I, and I've been thinking about this, cause you brought this up before. Is credentialing involved, right? And I'm familiar with town clerks' credentials, right? In the capacity of the treasurer, is that position required to have credentialing equal to what the clerk's credentialing is?
I don't know if it's equal or not, but there's, there's certainly certification for that.
It's not required, but you can.
But you can't. So in the court, in the court certification, oh, in most cases, the clerk has to serve for three years before they can sit for this, before they can sit for this certification. There is a professional committee that reviews that and make exceptions if they can demonstrate an experienced substitution. But usually a clerk has to serve three years. So if you hire a clerk with no experience, they're not gonna be able to.
Yeah, right, right. And then, so what happens to the town if we hire a clerk that's not credentialed? Do we have liability?
Yeah, are you guaranteed there's liability?
Well, I don't, I don't know if we.
You don't automatically have liability, but yeah, something went wrong, and somebody said, well, you know, I guess it could, it gets screwed up.
Yeah.
Competencyality is violated.
Yeah.
You know, causing that, you didn't have a certified.
But at, at the end of the, at the end of the, at the end of it all, right, in, in not having a certified CMMC, right, and a credential clerk. It, it sounds like our risk is minimal. It's minimal.
Everybody's there, that's the thing.
Yeah. And so the treasurer's position. If we had to do laboring analytics, right, I'm just, all right, do we, is it really possible to have one person cover both of those roles in a forty-hour week? Is that, does that fit in that box?
I think it is possible if you put in the system. You have some assistants to back them up, so that you have, and you see, I put in a, a pretty decent salary for the assistant town clerk position. Because you want somebody there who can maybe run the election without a lot of. Hands on.
Yeah. Yeah.
Kind of lost my train of thought. High work with a clerk treasurer who ran that way for over forty-five years. Four thousand people. Four thousand people. And their office was set up. I mean, it was a much bigger town, but they had an assistant on the clerk's side and they had an assistant on the treasurer's side. So it is possible. And if you go out to Western Mass or smaller towns, New Hampshire, Vermont, you'd find that's a more common combination. You're not gonna find a lot of workers in all big cities.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You're not gonna find that comparison.
Tax collector, that's part of the treasurer.
Yeah.
So I was just looking at, you know, that was actually helpful that Carol shared about the town clerk posting in Harvard.
Yeah, so.
And like the range for the salary, the hourly rate goes from thirty-three to forty-five, let's say. So you're somewhere within that realm of hourly rate probably for that role, just as a town clerk. Credential thing, the job description is pretty thorough. Uh, because it's a pretty comparable sized town. To add in the layer of treasurer and everything else, then it adds. At least a few bucks per hour to the role, right? Probably every forty bucks.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's a really nice salary for a town, so.
Yeah.
And same for her.
And these are, these are salary positions and not, oh.
The town clerk, the department should be salary.
Yeah.
Yeah, so yeah, maybe that helps take some of the heat off the hourly rate, cuz there's overtime with election ballots, yeah, salary.
What does a planning conservation administrator do?
Cheryl. It's Cheryl.
Yeah.
She's hired, she's sort of way more than one of the administrative assistants would do, that's why they make up the title.
So there actually would be two different jobs. And we, Cheryl's have held both of them for however long she's been here, twenty years. So I think they're, but they're separate positions, so. We could hire one person to do, like, replace Cheryl's or two individual people, one for the conservation commission and one for the planning board.
When are they leaving?
Cheryl said July thirty-first. On, it's, I guess, Carol's a few days after the election.
Yeah.
May twenty-fourth, I think.
That's what she said.
Yeah.
Sketch jointly requires us to certify the prior election for she to be honest.
Yeah, so July and August are high-hit months for us here.
And the fire chief is up, right?
Fire chief is sweeping. June thirty.
Yeah.
He is?
Well, that's his contract.
Oh, that. Think he's gonna wanna extend that?
Probably. Might change this one. Uh, he went into what he said till July, till July.
Yeah, I remember he said that in the meeting, he's very honest, right?
Yeah.
So we've got a fire chief.
Okay, I think we need to do some digesting here a little bit.
Yeah.
Right now, I'm not.
So I, I haven't put this in the budget.
Yeah.
As you can see, it could be, I think it can be done for the budget resources you have. Put aside.
I mean, it kinda makes sense. I did, it seems like it's. More functional arrangement of office coverage and.
Well, yeah, but, but there are, you know, this system, how much, how, how much did Bonnie get involved with VADA? Did she get involved in any of it? Did she get, did she?
She uses VADA.
Yeah.
She does, but not to the full extent. One of the things the town accountant would like to see happen when she retires is that we phase out some of the treasurer collectors' existing software and fully implement VADA.
Yeah. Yeah, and, and how, how, this is just a question, how skilled, what's the skill level like with Excel?
You need a lot of skill level with Excel. A lot of the balancing, see, I'm an assistant treasurer in another town and I do the monthly balancing. A lot of the monthly balancing that you're doing with the town accountant is in Excel. You receive some things like that are going into VADA, but a lot of things are happening in Excel. I also know Bonnie, for example, does her bank reconciliations with the exception of her two biggest accounts in Excel. So it, it's a pretty considerable job. But yes, Excel is the right for that.
Are you working with her a lot?
I am. I've been Bonnie's assistant treasurer and collector since twenty-fourteen, so since the beginning. I'm a member of Massachusetts Collector Treasurers Association by her sponsorship. I am already qualified to sit for the tax collector's examination for certification. The only reason I'm not ready for treasurer is because the pandemic interrupted the school. I am already the assistant treasurer of the town in East Elm, as I noted, and I already do a lot of the treasury work there, except treasury works in multiple towns.
Okay.
Alright.
Well, town to revenue override for salary adjustments? It's almost like.
We may be in there.
Maybe.
I mean, I say that somewhat joking, but like realistically.
It's not a joke.
Well, it's not really a joke. And inflation next year, like they're saying, most salaries should go up five to seven percent next year to catch with inflation. It's true. I mean, it's, it was, it, it was on like USA Today, CNN, Wall Street Journal, it's like, the expectation is five to seven percent next year.
He's doing the math, he's just calculating around.
In every.
I think seven percent.
Every sector.
Every sector, it's across the board.
Yeah.
The rate of inflation, everything, like getting a used car that's forty grand with like fifty thousand miles on it, four years old.
That's stupid.
So everything's going up, right? At some point, and we've talked about this before in the town, really. Two and a half percent doesn't give us enough to keep up with these rates.
No, it doesn't.
Even some of the local landscapers said, hey, all, all our rates are going up this year. I just got the email today.
I did too. I did too. The enrollment told us that.
Yeah, I, I get it. It's a good service, but you gotta pay for it if you want.
My wife said.
So you just. Right?
Yeah. We don't have one. Diminishing, diminishing workforce.
Okay.
Okay. Lots to think about. Is there a motion to accept January fourth minutes?
January fourth minutes. Second.
I'll do a favor.
Alright.
Alright.
Any old business, anything other?
No, so Pepperell's confirmed they're gonna take over as operator on the town.
Good.
Things are not, uh, aren't gonna have a happy ending with Swiss. Escalated. Spilling issues and work that they've done. Why the system didn't work a couple of weeks ago.
So that's too bad.
We like the idea of Pepperell taking over and in terms of licensure, right? You get all that covered right there.
Are they gonna send the water? So we still send the water bill, right? And if we had any backlash since the water bills went out, if people, no one's really fallen off the system personally.
Health is gonna be looking at somebody drilling a well for irrigation.
Okay. Okay.
And they did ask me, I had a little bit of conversation with town attorney about it, uh, whether you could have a bylaw to prevent people from leaving the water system. And you can, but the board of health apparently does have some authority to prevent people, they can issue orders and bind people to the water. So they've asked me to get some advice from the town.
Really? I don't like the sound of that, but I guess there's something like that exists. I'm not a big fan of that.
They just asked me, where are the grounds?
Yeah, yeah.
When they could do that, so that's, that's the, we're gonna see.
Okay, that should be interesting.
But yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, I'm sure that is not the popular word.
No.
Cheechee's still working with Bronn, that one, fired her, things, mapped out a, a couple options so far, do not feel better yet. We're better than, have a discussion for you.
Okay.
Bit openings for a routine project this Friday.
Wow, good.
Sweet.
Yep.
Do we know how many bidders are, you don't, you know? Are there drawing, um, they're, do we have drawings?
I don't know that I actually have a construction set, but, uh, let's see what I can put.
You, who's doing the bid? Are you?
No, no, state, the state of.
DOT. Oh, okay.
And then we had the pre-bid for the affordable housing project last week. There was only one attempt. But I still getting inquiries from people that we sent it to and, and.
Ready bid for the affordable mountain project?
No, no, there's no bids. We had the pre-bid meeting, sorry, pre-bid meeting last week. It's the mask.
Yeah.
So we had the pre-bid meeting last week. There was one person that came, I'm still getting inquiries from people that I've sent it to or that are seeing the advertisement.
When does that have to be?
They're asking questions. The bid, so we extended the deadline by a month, so March.
Extended the deadline.
Yep.
March eighth is the.
March eighth.
And is there a prerequisite to attend the meeting to bid?
No, it was not.
Do those other groups feel like they might be able to do something with that extended deadline?
Yeah.
Cool, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, we.
I saw the email.
Two people requested an extension, so you know, we don't have that.
Yeah, may as well.
So you might as well. If you got any, anybody interested.
Do we not have anybody interested?
There are.
No, we do.
No, but just to keep, having more than one would be helpful.
Yeah, absolutely.
You know?
Is, is page to hand bidding?
Haven't heard of it at all.
So they haven't requested documents or, and they just evaporate it.
I believe they got a project in the challenge for them in a nearby city. Do we know, thinking of the budget, is the school coming forward with a, a override?
They need to give us updated numbers.
Okay.
Which.
Okay.
They said they will work the unupdating their fire protection.
Okay.
I would suspect that they're going to give an override.
Okay. Yeah. I only ask because, as you'll be shifting away, it'd be nice for us to be.
Yeah.
As informed and I'm gonna try to catch any advice before the meeting on Zoom or watch it afterwards. A fun year.
Alright, so, um, for our, our newsletter, we should, I'd like to get that out probably beginning of February.
We've got the charter. The church. Town meeting. What your plan is for.
There was something else I had on the list at home. I can't remember what it is, but if anybody has ideas.
Yeah, I can get a roll of the bullets and.
Yeah.
Happy to send along and I'll send it to you first and I can.
Yeah.
Cut up and.
Yeah. Okay, I'm exhausted. Anyone else?
Did you answer? So I answered Tony Beatty, cuz I know him for another thing, that email he sent him, for, from Robinwood Farm.
Yeah.
I just answered and said, hey, do you wanna meet?
Oh, I, I met with him.
Okay, I didn't know if anybody had, just cuz I was like.
Yeah, yeah.
Alright, I'm awesome.
I met with him last week. Yeah. That wasn't sent.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. Alright, goodnight, everybody.